Okay, I'm sorry. Because usually I'm loud enough and I know you want to record this.
We have the event project review. And I know this is a little bit of an office, but since it's a consultation. Since it's a consultation, I wanted to just.
Sorry, gentlemen, how many do you all?
Let me do this on my phone this way.
I think. Peter, I can see you. If you're going over. There's some. Best service. You're down on your right.
I have. Jeffery. Jeffery. Jeffery.
Thanks, Jay.
Jay Greenwell, Lanciveir.
Hey, Jay, we can turn on the microphone there, please.
Thank you.
Please.
Did I message? Wait, is also off on the screen? Oh, look at that. Well.
Yeah. It's a. And we're high tech now. You can point. See?
Um. I like it.
Jay, I can hold it. Keep this copy for the record, yes?
Yes. Yep. If anybody else needs another one, let me know. Okay, so Jay Greenwell, Lanciveir. With me is Jeff Conig, representing the owner, and Peter Mackinson, representing the tenant. They've been there. They make cosmetics and beauty products at Ram. Beauty products. They've been there for approximately twelve plus or minus years. And running out of room. They need an expansion. Jeff's been looking around, trying to get him another place, but it's, there's nothing available that would suit their needs. We are proposing a ten thousand square foot addition to the back. As a matter of fact, I'll do it over here.
Jay, you want this laser?
Point.
Ah. Yeah, that doesn't light up enough.
So, ten thousand square foot addition to the back, needs a fifty foot variance, because all of these buildings require a hundred foot yard all over the place. We are proposing a new area for parking in the front. This ends up being a total of thirty-four parking spaces, way more than they need. They, I'll have Peter speak to their operation, but they have a significant number of employees that arrive by a jitney from a service that they've been using for over ten years. When we went to project review, we actually had more spaces that didn't require a variance. And Bruce Peters, in his comments, and some of the other comments were, hey, why don't you reduce some of the impervious area that you don't need? We sit fine. We have to go to zoning board appeals for a variance in the back here anyway. You recall that this was the diversified glass and storefront that's been approved, but it moved down here. It had been approved, but it has not, they haven't started construction yet.
But you're showing the proposed.
We did show, we did show the proposed. This is the existing building, and this is the proposed Mecatom. The proposed hydrant that we were going to try and use, but it looks like it's a little too far away. We added in the existing building to the east. This is the super pump station. And one of the key things that came up at project review was Dave Majewski wanted, or was requiring by code, a fire lane that would provide a minimum, a maximum actually, of a hundred and fifty foot hose pole to the farthest reach of the building. So we have it here for a hundred and fifty feet, and then another here for another hundred and fifty feet. If there's more than a six hundred foot travel away, we have to provide a yard hydrant, which is why SQ ended up having to do this one. But we will, we would address that as we, as we go on. The grading works out well. We provided a detention basin on the east side. The rationale here is that we would capture all the roof runoff that we need to capture in order to mitigate any additional impervious surface from the Mecatom. So it's much easier, because you have gravity working for you if you pick it up from the roof. The initial plan that we had submitted to project review, and you'll see from Bruce's comments, did not have a, an access road around it, but we depicted that on this one. The pond is not sized, it's sized by a seat of the pants guess, as to what we will need. It could very well be bigger than what is necessary to mitigate this, which is a fairly, it's a fairly minimal amount of impervious area, but we could also do it, some of it underground, but I know D E M E and D E C are preferring above-ground storage now. So that's basically it. Peter, if you could just give a little overview of your operation in terms of the parking requirements and the employee.
We have about eight or nine full-time employees. We bring in about twenty-five agency workers. They come in. They drop them off early in the morning, and. We operate typically four days a week.
What type of business, cosmetic?
Yeah, cosmetic, mostly hair care products, shampoos, conditioners, hair oils.
Typically deliveries come in box trucks?
Deliveries come in trailers. We bring in bottles, things like that. We do product, we bring in intakers.
Do you manufacture or basically repackage?
We manufacture.
Okay.
We did say we make batches.
Let me go through the consulting reports. Project review has no additional. Office of Building and Zoning Planning, Jane Sladen, January seventeenth. She has seven comments. You get Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, January twenty-first. He has twelve comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention and Town and Orange Town, January sixth. We have a total of eight comments. I have a letter from David Majewski, David, January twenty-second. This is in response to the fire access road and the hydrant. I have a letter from Jay Greenwell, January thirteenth, which is narrative summary. And I have the short E A F dated December tenth, twenty-four. Okay. Andy, last one?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Andy, questions or comments?
No, not, not right now.
Okay, thank you. Matt, anything? So there's two, basically two employees from this addition?
It would maybe three. I think we talked about with.
Ira.
Ira. He said it would be a maximum of three. It's mostly.
Mostly going to be warehouse space, storage.
Storage.
Of components, so new people put stuff away, take it out.
And parking is adequate just for the square footage?
Yes.
As it is.
Yes. There's, there's never been an issue with parking, and this is going to add an additional eight spaces up front. Which is, again, more than we need, and we would ask for variance. If we have to put it in, we would, we actually discussed land banking at, at P R C.
Other questions? Thank you. Mike?
Okay. So it's going to be a total of twenty spots up front?
We reduced that to eight up front here.
Okay. All right.
We originally, when we went to project review, we had it all the way across.
Yeah, you had a total of twenty-five spots, I think. Well, your narrative says twenty-five.
I reduced that.
Was it based on Bruce's recommendation?
Right, yeah. Okay. So the number now totaled in front is twenty, and fourteen on the side.
Correct.
Do you have any plans, things you want to put up in this area?
Oh, yeah. We're, this was just to show you and get a sense of, you know, this is not the first application for variances. You know, I worked on Key Med, which was Olympus Industrial, which is now Celtic Sheet Metal. They got some significant variances to the rear. We just want to show it to you, see how you feel, and, you know, if you said this doesn't fly at all, then we're going to go away. If you say that, you know, we don't have a problem, we're going to give you a full landscape and plan, and you, you know.
Just consultation. Just getting.
Yeah.
Nothing off of this.
No, nothing.
Okay, thank you.
The event was just for a story, and it's just going to maximize the existing system?
Yeah. Is it going to be a little higher? It was going to be a maximum of thirty, I think. They may have, it might have been a slightly, the maximum is twenty-five feet. Twenty-six feet is permitted, and this was going to be twenty-five feet.
Mike?
Uh, actually, along the same line, I was seeing the same thing. You have existing twenty-five, proposed twenty-six, is that the? On this one, anyway.
Yeah, the, I think the, the proposed might be one foot higher than the existing.
Now, I wonder how that relates to the fire department?
As long as it's less than thirty. Yeah, that's, that's the magic number.
If it's less than thirty, would you want that fire access road?
He wouldn't need it all the way, he wouldn't need it all the way around, but he still needs this regardless of the height.
For one fifty. Oh, but one fifty, but not, not the whole land, as long as it's a thirty.
Right.
So that's going to max the existing height.
Bless you.
Um, I kind of agree with Mike, you know, every time you had parking in the front, we liked landscape, it kind of, you know, eased up the visual.
Right.
That's a nice area, you drive by.
It is.
Big lots.
It is.
That's why I'm glad, you know, you kind of, the addition in the back is an easier sell than moving anything towards that street line.
And the request for a variance, I think we could make sense of this, because no one's going to see it.
Yeah, yeah. So with the parking in the front, so landscape, it's limited parking, I like that you reduced it. You know, landscape and cover that, it should be good to go. That's all you got.
Okay.
Root anything?
No, I got nothing. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, looks like, I don't, you want to open it up to the public? Yeah, let's open the public, see if the public have an idea. You have a motion to open the public?
Motion of a public caution.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments on this? Are you ready on motion to close the public session?
Motion to close public session.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good luck with it.
Okay. All right, so we're going to get everything ready, and we'll come back for the formal debate.
Perfect. I did see that you want to re-squirrel that person, do not cut my TV. You're the first guy. I think it'd be the first. Jay, you want these back?
I want a couple of those. I took one, but.
Okay. The next item is fright, raw air installation, hazmat storage container site plan, P P twenty-four dash forty-six. Yes, sir, how you doing?
I love.
Please explain your project to us.
Okay, so we want to put outside in the back of our facility, a hazmat storage self-contained unit. We have hazmat in our building.
Could you do me a favor? Push that little button, so we get you on the record.
No, push the button down, so the light, the light, yeah, there you go.
Okay. All right, do it all over again?
No, you don't have to.
Okay. We want to put a hazmat storage in the back of our facility. We have hazmat storage in-house, and we want to just move it into the back in a self-contained unit to clear up some space for more storage, but that's not going to be hazmat storage. And that's pretty much what the project is. And we want to go ahead and move forward and put a purchase order in for the storage, if we could, and we're just looking for approval on that.
Okay, excellent. Let me go through the consultant reports. Project review has no additional comments. The Office of Building and Zoning Planning, Jane Sladen, January seventeenth. She has six comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town and Orange Town, January twenty-first. Bruce Peters has one comment. Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town and Orange Town, January sixth, they have one comment. Rockland County Department of Planning, January second. They have a total of eleven comments. I have a letter, actually, from, from David Grother to Gerard Chessman, dated December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
D O T.
Uh, D O T, that's for D O T, yeah, thank you. I have a short E A F. Dated October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. I have a fire response comments from the Department of Transportation, D O T. And I'm looking for a date on it. I think this is a certified registration, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. And I think this is all the.
That's really meant for I U C, Mr. Campbell.
Should we?
I said the certifications really meant.
Correct, that's, that's what I was going to, okay. And under some, well, that's all clean, and something from Clean Harbor. And I think there's just their reports and certifications. In the short E A F, yeah, I'm going to get to that. Howard Powell, there's no date on this one. Okay, I have a letter from Stefan Lombal, October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I have a letter from J V. Uskris, dated October seventeenth. Containing this project. I have another letter from Raquel Perez, October seventeen. I have a letter to the town, from the town, Orange Town C B A, consenting to town planning or service lead agent, that's dated September eighteenth, twenty-four. I have a letter from Town of Orange Town C B A, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, no comments at this time. I have a letter from Rockland County Planning, dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, but comments attached. Letter from Rockland County Planning, September twenty-fourth, consenting to Town of Orange Town Planning or Service Lead Agent. I have a letter from Viola, dated October tenth, two thousand twenty-four, no further correspondence to the site, should be sent. Okay, I have a letter from, current day, Rockland County Department of Planning, consenting to Town of Orange Town Planning or Service Lead Agent, December seventeenth, twenty-four, and again, Rockland County Planning, December seventeenth, twenty-four, comments attached. Thanks, man. Do I have anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Andy, questions or comments?
Yes. So this was continued from, in October, I think it was? October twenty-third. I can't remember why they asked for a continuance. Does anybody, nobody remembers? So you're putting in how many containers for haz?
One container, yes.
One container, and that's over on the, I guess, the west side of the building there? What kind of, what kind of hazardous material is going to go in there?
So in the Clean Harbors report, that is all the hazardous material that we have stored back there. A lot of it is metals, as well as rags and stuff that are contaminated with oil, and all this stuff is picked up from Clean Harbors and then is transported off premises. So it's basically, it's just a holding, and so Clean Harbors comes in and then takes us off premises for that.
So metals, you say metals, is that like powder?
Uh, some of it's powder, some of it is some nitric acid in there, silver, as well as oils, different hydraulic oils as well.
Pratt's here still makes.
Targets for microchips.
Okay.
Metal manufacturing.
Andy, if I could interrupt just one second?
Sure.
The last gentleman was here, I asked him. Basically, you're putting your product that you're going to get rid of in the container, and Clean Harbor is taking that container, there's no transfer, or they're not coming in pumping whatever material is from your container, putting it in. Once you put it in a container, it stays in that container?
Yes, it's a.
And then they transport it.
Correct.
Okay, so it's a swap? Whatsoever.
Yeah, so it's a sealed container, so once we fill up whatever the waste drum is, whatever material, we then seal it, we put the tag on for Clean Harbor is D O T ready, and it goes into the hazmat, and then that's where it'll sit until Clean Harbors comes and does a pickup for that.
They pick it up and they, they do a swap, they give you another container, or?
We have empty containers on, on premises already.
Okay.
So it's basically just filling up the containers, once they're filled, seal them, and then we put them into the trailer, and then Clean Harbors will come, pick them up, and take them off premises. So there's no pumping whatsoever.
Right.
From containers into Clean Harbors. They're taking the drums and removing them off premises.
Okay. Oh, so you put them in drums and store them in this.
Correct.
Container, okay, I see. And that, that's going to sit on a concrete pad, or, it says asphalt pavement, but is this particular container that you store the containers in, where that's going to sit on the asphalt or concrete?
It's going to sit on the asphalt.
Okay.
Yes.
I have nothing else right now.
Matt, anything?
And so it's essentially solid material.
Yes.
It's not liquids, it's not something.
There are some liquid waste oils, correct, hydraulic oils and things like that, that we will take from the oil changes that we do on some of our machines. We have a lot of C N C machines and stuff like that, and those require hydraulics. So when we change them out, they go into the drums, they get tagged when they're filled, and they would go into storage, and then Clean Harbors would come and pick them up and remove the drums off premises.
And the drums are filled in your facility?
In-house, yes.
So once the door is open and the person takes them out to this, they're already, they're sealed?
A hundred percent sealed, correct.
And then they're just taken, still sealed, like what you were saying?
Well, that's what I said, there's no transfer.
Correct.
Once there any container, they start.
Yeah, so they're, they're put into the container indoors. Taken to this container that you're, you're proposing, and then someone just takes it from there.
Yes.
Mike, anything?
Yeah, that, the storage containers you're picking up, it's both, last meeting you said it holds twenty drums?
From my understanding, I think it was a forty container.
Okay, so I.
Trailer. But we only have on hand about twenty drums at a time. It won't, we don't fill it up. So we call Clean Harbors when we have about twenty waste drums, and that's when they'll come and pick it up. So we won't be holding forty drums at a time with that.
Now, the nitric acid, are there any other acids besides the nitric?
Uh, I am not sure, I would have to go through the Clean Harbors of exactly what acids are in there, but I definitely know there is nitric acid, but I'm not sure on the other ones that are in there.
And the drums, do they have the double line drums?
Correct, yes.
One comment on the Rockland County Planning, submission, item number six. I think they meant to indicate six, two, thirteen, eight. I don't think they're referring to three A. It would be to prove their. And that refers to coal acreage, so. I don't know what they're, what the rest are for there. No further, you saw the comments all about the, the plants have to show all the distances to the other containers?
Yeah, so we had updated the plans, but I guess there are some that we have missed that we still have to update.
Right, and what's stored in the other containers?
They're shipping materials, boxes, foam materials that we use for packaging when we ship out our goods to our customers, boxes and things like that. They're shipping materials, boxes, foam materials that we use, um, for packaging when we ship out our goods to our customers, um, boxes and things like that.
And the, uh, the cylinder there, that's still used for argon gas, all the?
Say that again?
That cylinder on the west side, the, uh, the silo.
Yes, that's argon.
Argon, nothing else?
That's it, yeah.
Okay, no change to that. Alright, I'll throw it in. Thank you very much.
I think it seems like a lot of, like, Jane's comments are missing from our floor that haven't been addressed, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Oh, yeah, just a couple of comments, I see you included the profile document report.
Correct.
Shows everything that's in there. Uh, did the Fire Prevention get this?
Yes, they did, they, they were sent a copy of this.
Alright, 'cause I mean, you, you look at their October eighth letter, they asked what's stored in the hazmat container? And then they, the latest letter on January sixth, they're still asking for what's stored, it's like they didn't, they're not getting this information, 'cause that's their only comment on how do I, I'm storing these units. Why wouldn't they have, uh, why wouldn't they have the answer?
Uh, I'm not sure on that, uh.
But this is something that.
That was forwarded to them.
I understand that existing containers.
No information on any of the existing containers that are shown?
Right.
But there's no previous approval for those containers.
Do they know what's in those, all the containers?
Uh, from my understanding, we were talking about the new container, I wasn't aware that they did.
Looks like what they're asking for. Yeah, one of my comments is, we have no information on those.
On those, the carons are, so you.
The other containers, we don't know what's in them, because they never got permits for those.
Alright, so October eighth, they're looking for what's in the new ones.
Okay.
You satisfy them, now they want to know what's in the old ones, because this is what the, uh, the carons, alright. You might, you might have to forward them more information.
Okay.
To satisfy them. Uh, I guess this is just a question for, uh. I don't know, with, with Rockland Plan, they, they've said it a few times about, uh, that the planning board need to ensure compliance with state and federal regulations? How do we do that? Unless there's eleven, maybe seven, or?
Yeah, they, they have a number of, like, late moments, they go on every project.
Oh, yeah, 'cause if that puts a lot of pressure on the planning board to say, oh, you're gonna comply with federal and state planning, planning and employment plans.
Because the board doesn't have any expertise.
No, we're, we're, so we look for a comment from New York State on this issue, alright, it's wanting, it seems like it's a lot of.
The agencies, it's, it's referred to the agencies, they choose not to comment.
Yeah, alright, just wanted to make sure we're in the, we're in the clear, because that's a lot of pressure for.
We can't make them comment.
Alright, that's all I got, just cleared it up with, uh, you know, the Fire Prevention seems to have a few more questions, Bruce, anything?
No.
Okay, Tom, one, one more question, the, uh, container that your containers are gonna be stored in, is that climate controlled?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that, I would have to get that information for you.
Because, I mean, if you set acid outside in the heat, it could explode.
So it depends what stores in it, what's stored in it.
Well, nitric acid, I would believe.
That's the problem, we don't know.
So, what's clear too, they, they'll require IUC.
Right.
Okay.
The Industrial User Committee will have to review this. And the, the environmental engineers are also involved in the IUC. So Bruce, that's the brain initiative, is, that's what engineer this.
Just wanna make one comment, uh, we have the Department of Transportation, United States, hazardous material, certificate of registration for twenty, for the registration years of twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Certifies that the register is registered with US Department of Transportation required by forty nine CFR Part one oh seven, subpart G. Right, so, I don't know if, uh, I'm trying to find a book with any of the, uh, items. Anything on the description here of the, uh, of the container that's to be used by, say, two hour fire rated? The, for the record, thank you, no further.
You have some more? Motion to open to public?
Motion to open to public, please.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
One favor, uh, anybody from the public who should speak on this thing? Very none, then a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
One favor, aye, any opposed, none? We've got too many questions to answer, we thought we were gonna get these, the answers. And I didn't realize, and I think a lot of people didn't realize, that the existing storage you have, you don't have permits for, nor do we know what's in them. And I think we have to know that. Uh, I think, do you have all these comments?
Yes, I do.
Uh, I think you should really look at Jane Slavin's comments.
Okay.
Because, um. There's just, just with her stuff alone, there's just too many things that, that aren't answered. Right? Um, the only thing we can do, we have a choice, you can, you can ask for a continuation, or we can delay it, we're not gonna delay it. So, are you asking for a continuation?
Yes, I'll ask for a continuation.
Have all this stuff, you can back, so if you, if you have it, it's one, two, three, right? Alright? Um, we don't know what's there.
Okay.
Good, most that can be answered from you now, the, you look at, uh, Jane Slavin's comments, they're talks about the size of the containers, what's in the containers. Um, there's a lot of that you can.
So.
Be numbered, and then you can, in an Arab, say, this contains this, this contains this. That's all the contains, 'cause it's about, what is it, about five or six, I think, on the property.
Yep. What appears to be five.
Yeah. Yeah.
Those called containers that don't, anything has that, but, I'm not aware of what's in them.
They don't know what's in them, and what type of rating they are, if they're fire rated, or, you know, what they are, or any type of fire prevention you have, if, if needed. You know, if it's not, if, if this stuff's not flammable, it doesn't have to be fire rated, but we still have to know.
Okay.
Alright?
And the dimensions are required, those as well. They only show the dimensions of hazmat, but it's gonna do all the things, which was in my original, but, no.
Okay.
Alright, and if you have any questions, please call us, the Building Department, and, uh, they can help you with it.
Okay, appreciate it.
Alright?
Thank you for your time.
And, and if you get this done, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it seems like a very simple thing, so.
Before you come out with this, make sure it's done.
Yeah.
So you don't have to come back again.
Okay, so, just want, we're on the same page, better narrative, see what's in, you want to include everything, go through what Jane Slavin said.
And Bruce Peters and both, both through all, Rockland County Planning, all of them.
They're, they're all addressable?
Okay.
Right.
So, it's being in your best interest, if you could address them all and come back to, you know, move you through a lot quicker.
Okay.
Alright?
Yep, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, yes.
Yes, thank you, have a good night.
Okay, uh, next is Project Sycamore, Phase Three Site Plan, PP twenty four dash fifty. Hello, you?
Uh-oh, back again. I do.
Um, okay, you got David Snyder, Bill Devlin, and, um, Rob Foley.
Everybody sign that sheet, please.
I said, um, you know, I.
Uh, Rob Foley, Steve Dill, I mean, uh, Bill Devlin and David Snyder.
I have this, is there a notary that we can get?
You have a attorney?
I know, I, I know, I just got it tonight, so.
In charge here.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, town staff, Lino Scheretta, partner with the law firm, Blake Lee Platt and Smith, on behalf of JP Morgan Chase. Uh, I'll let everyone introduce themselves to the table.
I'm David Snyder, uh, project architect.
Robert Foley, project civil engineer.
Bill Devlin, project mechanical, electrical.
So, uh, briefly, we're here tonight, this is, uh, Phase Three of JP Morgan Chase's data center. Just by way of a little background, uh, the, this project was originally approved back in, by your board back in twenty eighteen. Uh, the original project, if I'm not mistaken, that was approved, again, the footprint of it, the FAR was approximately about two hundred fifty seven thousand, two hundred twenty five square feet. What's out there today, existing, is a, is a one hundred ninety two square foot, one, four hundred forty seven square foot facility that's there now. Phase Three, what we're proposing is gonna, is a new, uh, form factor, which is going to be approximately forty three thousand, four hundred ninety six square building, which will constitute, when you add that to the one ninety two number. The new square footage will be approximately two hundred and thirty five thousand, six forty three, which is under what your board had approved back in twenty eighteen at two hundred fifty seven roughly square feet.
Actually, two ninety two, oh, ninety five.
Two ninety two, two ninety two, so that's why you do math.
It's even bigger.
I do legal, so, so without further ado, I'm gonna have Bob do the, just a brief overview of the site plan, and then obviously we'll take any comments or questions from the board, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You had to tell me the capacity, go.
Want to make sure it's okay?
Um, yeah, um, as, as outlined, uh, gave you the relative square footages, we had, uh, we were here almost seven years ago to the day. Uh, received approval for the two hundred ninety two thousand square feet and change. Uh, what ultimately was built, um, as it sits out there today, was a hundred ninety two thousand, uh.
One forty seven?
One forty seven, thank you.
True.
Uh, now I'm getting numbers confused. Uh, and we're proposing, the, the form factor of the building, what's, what's changing is, um.
Want to get up?
Yeah, you know what, it probably.
Do you want a little green thing?
There you go.
You know what?
Okay, yeah, we'll do this.
Um, you know what, I'm gonna, yeah, well, not, I'm gonna point to it with my, and my blue Sharpie.
Okay.
I can bring.
Is that mic on?
The setting for what we're doing here, um, as exhibit, and I'll, I'll hold it up, um, then I'll point to it with the mic.
Mic there.
Thank you, thank you.
Phil, uh, what's proposed here, obviously, we see the existing building, it pink outline, uh, there's called the backyard area, area here at Plan Southwest. What is proposed in this Phase Three expansion, you can see this stipple pattern here, filling, infill, as well as a small expansion out to center spine of the building. That, and four emergency engine generators. Uh, this, these two areas, right now, the existing building is high bay, single story. This new expansion will be two stories, uh, slightly, uh, higher, but still well within the, the, the zone allowances. Believe our existing building is approximately thirty five feet, uh, what's proposed will be in the, I shouldn't have this off the top of my head, forty?
Forty four.
Forty four, that's what I was gonna say. Uh, so, really just a, uh, a, a de minimis, relatively minor change, uh, for what is, is contemplated here. Done with that? Um, everything is, what we're proposing, as I noted, is variance free. Um, there were two minor, uh, variances that were required, I'll just note for the record, they're carried on the cover sheet of the site plan set. Uh, one was for fence height, and no change to the existing perimeter fence, uh, as well as we had performance standards, uh, that were related to the generator operations. Uh, but essentially, no change in that. Speaking of the generators, well, we are proposing an additional four to the twelve that are out there currently. The original two thousand eighteen approval had twenty emergency engine generators as part of it, so we are still under that, uh, that original approval number. Um, you know, the one thing, I will also note, within the site plan set, there is a site master plan, shows a more full build out of what's currently contemplated. Should, uh, the bank based on business needs at some point in the future, keep going with expansions with this two-story scheme. Um, right now, that's only a concept, and should they decide to move forward with any further expansions, that would obviously be subject to review by, by this board. Um, in a subsequent application, there's no timeline, uh, for when that could occur. Uh, but we just wanted to carry that, show that master plan for where things could go, uh, in the future.
Yeah, and primarily for that, for secret purposes, we wanted to show you, and that was a good idea that PRC had, just to show one sheet of a master plan that we contemplate, obviously, for future build out, uh, should they need a rise. But again, it's just conceptual, just, it's a master plan, as, um, Rob indicated, again, all right now, we're focusing on is, is Phase Three. But we wanted to show you what it possibly looked like in the future, should they need a rise.
Um, yeah, and I'll just note that, same as the, the generators out there currently, these additional four would be in sound and weather enclosures. Um, same type of testing protocol and operations, um, as the, the current existing installations. Uh, you know, beyond that, in terms of site improvements, um, not actually shown on that exhibit that I, that I brought. Uh, but we did, in this latest set of documents, incorporate, uh, a comment from the fire official, that we have a fire lane that is close to the building. Uh, meets the, the, the town code requirement of, uh, basically between fifteen and thirty feet from, uh, from the structure. So, that is incorporated, and we intend to, to, to build that. Um, and other than the building form factor, there are some minor, uh, site utility relocations, mainly related to how we pick up roof drainage in that Plan, uh. Uh, Southwest quadrant of the site, um, you know, they're all, all small diameter, uh, pipes that were previously constructed. Uh, contemplating the original full build out, and now things are shifted, so some of those pipes need to be relocated. As well as an onsite, uh, water main, that's primarily for, for fire purposes, the fire main loop around the building, was constructed inboard of that maintenance fire lane road. And in the, uh, proposed condition, uh, we have some screen walls that will, the foundations will conflict with that. So that, that loop in the expanded area, uh, will be pushed outboard into the roadway, uh, just to, uh, eliminate that, that conflict. Um, we, uh, we've had a dialogue with, uh, with Bruce Peters, um, you know, I was act, I was the original engineer of record on the initial construction, I was here seven years ago. Um, but I have a history with stormwater management on the site, uh, it was significantly overdesigned at the time, one to accommodate that new larger building, as well as, there is a significant amount of undeveloped land on the property. That the existing onsite stormwater management basin was sized for eighty percent impervious area of that, so we have significant logistical capacity, not that, excuse me. Not that we're even getting close to that with this latest expansion, so there's, there's basically no issue. Um, you know, Mr. Peters' review memorandums were, uh, were primarily, I believe, just, uh, mostly annotated comments for how he would like to see my, uh, my, one, my stormwater report documentation, as well as. Uh, the SWIP is actually, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan is still open on the site from the original construction, so the intent is this will just be treated as an amendment, uh, to that. Um, that guidance document for, uh, for disturbances on the property. Um, you know, beyond that, uh, no change to site lighting, other than, uh, frankly, rewriting some, excuse me, reorienting some, uh, wall pack lighting that's on the building perimeter. Um, and in any case, where the expansion is going, um, to the, to the east, it, it, it goes in the direction of the Broad Acres Golf Club, where we have a significant grade change. Um, or to the south, which is on, uh, the undeveloped portion of the JPMC property. And no change to site plannings at all, um, you know, we're in a back operations area of the site, um, and that's really what we're proposing.
Okay, thank you. Let me go through the, uh, consulting boards. Project review has no additional comments? Project review has no additional comments. Uh, office ability zoning planning, Jane Slavin, January seventeenth, she has two comments. Uh, Department of.
I think you're on the.
Mine has two. And then, no, I'm on the down, never mind, I'm sorry. That's why. I was freaking out, holding down.
We can get ourselves into a nutrilear.
Yeah. Whew. That's alright, I got a little screwed, I got, I got the wrong one? Okay. Okay, um, okay, let's start all over then, okay, project review has no additional comments. Office ability zoning planning, Jane Slavin, January seventeenth. Office of Building and Zoning Planning, Jane Slavin, January seventeenth, she has three comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, January twenty-first, Bruce Peters has three comments. Department of Environmental Management, January twenty-second, Bruce Peters, he has one comment. Bureau of Fire Prevention, January seventh, he has five comments. Short EAF dated December sixth, twenty-four. The memorandum from Sam Schwartz dated December eleventh, twenty-four. I have a letter from Lynn Guerrero, I'm sorry, it's back, I got it wrong, November twenty-seventh.
It's just my, it was my email asking for the German.
I have a letter from Office of Building and Zoning Planning, Jane Slavin, November twenty-second, she has six comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, December tenth, two thousand twenty-four, Bruce Peters has three comments. I have a letter from Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, they have six comments. Rocket County Highway Department, November eighth, two thousand twenty-four, they have three comments. I have a letter from the Town of Orange Town ZVA dated November sixth, two thousand twenty-four, consenting Town of Orange Town Planning Board Service Lead Agent. I have a letter dated November sixth, two thousand twenty-four, Town of Orange Town ZVA, no comments at this time. I have a letter from, again, Sam Schwartz, October fourteenth, pertaining to the project. Another short EAF dated October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and task decisions. Any else, Stuart? No, that's up in. Okay, thank you very much. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, just wondering if Jane could pull up. Print A two thousand and four. Yeah. It's on the, might be on the other set of prints. It's like the elevation and stuff. Well, we, we could discuss all of that right in there, that's. Yeah, if we could see the south.
Jane, you want the laser?
Well, it's not on here, there is a south view of it. Well, it started there, I couldn't open up my prints. Is that? It shows the south side of the building.
There it is.
So, that's gonna, is that gonna be the new addition?
Yeah, what is in that dark pink color.
Right, the dark pink, right, so that's on the, that's on the south side, closest to the, like, I guess, the guard shack or something, the, the office that's.
What it.
That's separate from the building itself.
Yeah, it, 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 it's actually, it's not freestanding, it would be in that, that direction.
Right.
On the side of.
So this is, this is Google Earth?
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's in this area right here?
Actually, no, no, it would be.
Well, that's the southwest.
On the right side of your screen.
Southeast side.
Southeast, yes.
Oh, okay, so it's gonna, all right, so it's gonna go right in, in that's.
Yeah.
That's gonna be phase three on that side.
That would be phase three.
Okay, all right. Now, is that, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the, the, the landscape, doesn't that slope up to that side?
No, there's a, a pretty much a flat, there's a flat grade plane in that area inside the, the fire lane maintenance road. The grade change is outboard of that fire lane maintenance road.
Okay, all right. So, this is gonna be phase three, and you're gonna have other phases as you go or as you need.
undefined timeframe.
undefined.
And it was. Could be.
Could be, potentially.
Somewhere. Is that gonna all be on the south side, if you do that?
It would, it would be an additional, the, the next phase would be a further build-out on the south side.
One thing I can, did a little add to the exhibit, maybe a little on our C Mac.
Rob take the mic?
I have a big mouth, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, there we go. Can see the hatched area in red.
Right.
That is phase three, the next phase, when and if it ever happens, would be a continuation of the Sector F to the full, both out limit, essentially mirroring this out to the Ring Road. Then beyond that, years down the road, who knows, there'd be a similar expansion on the planned southeast side.
Right.
And again, it's based on business use, this board would have the opportunity to review, approve those expansions at that point in time. We're not seeking anything there right now.
Right.
But that, that would be the ultimate intent theoretically.
Yeah, my concern was not building on the north side of the building, because then we're getting too close to public, you know, housing and stuff like that.
Yeah, no, fully understood, the, the intent is any expansion, and as I was part of the original approval, that would all be within the confines of the, the maintenance fire lane around the perimeter of the building. You know, and obviously, we have the grade change in the direction of the golf course. That was something that, you know, me as the, the civil guy, really, really, really wanted to, to stay away from, and the architect and MEP engineers did manage to come up with a concept scheme to fit everything within, without any real disruption to the, the original intent of the site.
Now, you, you said you're gonna put generators in there also?
Yes, an additional, additional four behind screen walls, similar to the present installation, present, you know, building layout.
Okay.
That's, that's currently exist out there.
And they're gonna be diesel operated?
Diesel.
Large, large generators?
Two and a half megawatt.
And you're gonna have a test run once a week or something like that on them, or, or is that necessary?
Yeah, it would, it would be a, a similar testing protocol to how the existing units are exercised now.
And that, that would be during the week, on a weekend?
It, it's typically business hours during the week.
Business hours during the week, okay.
Like a thirty-minute time duration.
Yeah, okay, all right. I don't have anything further right now.
Okay, thank you. Matt, any questions or comments?
No, no questions.
How about the EAF, I have number ten, it's the O E R.
Yeah, they gotta, yeah, they gotta change it.
And the fuel storage tanks, what are they, double line?
Double wall, leak detection in the interstitial space.
Fourteen, fourteen thousand gallons at each generator.
Okay, and the fuel's going to be into a, into each one, or?
Yeah, they are, believe, they are individual fills, same as current installation.
Does it spill, does it containment under there to contain anything?
Yes, the, the, the enclosure has provisions for that.
Double wall, with leak detection.
Okay, but when he's pumping it in, there's a.
He has to, I think, I believe he puts the, the protection around the truck.
Okay.
As he's pumping it in.
Right.
Yeah.
Do they fill the diesel, the tanks from one spot, or do they go to several different spots?
They, they go to the each generator.
Each generator gets filled separately?
Yep.
Each, each yard has a, has a roll-up door that's sized for truck access, and that, that, that truck is pulled into the yard, and.
Parallel to each generator and then.
Yeah, there's a fill individually at each one.
Yep.
Some of the other applications for other things, they go to one spot?
And there's a manifold, and it gets piped, yeah.
Just so prevent any type of leakage, so, you don't have that, that's okay, just interesting, okay.
Have any further?
Yep.
Just a comment, similar to Andy's, like, it's a nice piece, piece of property, because it's so far away from the residents, and this expansion is also further away from the residents, so I like it that, you know, you kind of have a little island on your own, you're not really affecting too many neighbors around you, except maybe a couple of climbers and patients. That's all I got, but it was interesting that Bruce Peters had a January twenty-first letter, and then a January twenty-second letter. You must have loused him with, with your SWIP.
We do.
Yeah, yeah, the twenty, the January twenty-second, you know, we, we have a, a very, very overdesigned sanitary sewer pump station, and that's, he primarily, he just wants some different, a different annotation format for the material that I provided him in the memo.
We're happy, we're happy, that's all, yeah.
Thank you.
Motion to open up to the public, please.
Motion open public portion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, none, okay. Anybody from the public, who should speak on this project? Okay, motion to close public?
Motion to close public portion.
Second? All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. This was continuing last time, so we have to do a lead agent again, right? Okay, motion for lead agent?
Motion for lead agency.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, none? Motion for neg deck?
Motion for neg deck.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, any opposed, none? Motion for final with conditions?
Motion for final with conditions.
Okay, let me go through the consultant's give. No, I gave you the, the picture sheets. Okay, I have Office of Building and Zoning Planning, Jane Slavin, January seventeen, two thousand twenty-five, three comments. Department of Building and Environmental Management and Engineering, January twenty-first, Bruce Peters has three comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, January twenty-second.
Yes, sir, Bruce Peters, January twenty-first, I noticed it, it's actually four, because he has two number threes, so it should be just four comments.
Thank you very much. Gotta keep you around. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, January twenty-second, Bruce Peters has one. Bureau of Fire Prevention, January seventh, they have five. I think that's it. Anything else?
We have to reread the.
Right. Oh, okay, right, 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 I have to go through them. Thank you. We have a counting. Okay, Office of Building and Zoning Planning, Jane Slavin, November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, six comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, December tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Four.
Again, four comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, has six comments. Rocket County Highway Department, November eighth, two thousand twenty-four, has three, and that's it. More?
Yeah.
Oh, you wanna read the, okay. Yep. Town of Orange Town ZVA, November sixth, two thousand twenty-four, consenting Town of Orange Town Planning Board Service Lead Agent. Town, Town of Orange Town ZVA, November sixth, two thousand twenty-four, no comments. You want those, those letters, those memorandums? Okay. I have to go back to the other one. Just a second.
Here you go.
Okay.
Here's three of them.
Yeah, I got them right here. I have a letter from Sam Schwartz dated December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. That's the same one, I have a letter from Lino Guerrero, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. We did that, we did that, I have a letter from Sam Schwartz, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Revised one now.
I have another one from Sam Schwartz, October twenty-fourth, revised, January eighth, two thousand fifteen, two thousand fifteen? Okay, that's the original, scared me for a second, okay. I have a letter from Sam Schwartz, dated November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
December.
Huh?
December.
December. December eleventh, I'm sorry. And short EAF dated October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the old decisions. Okay, anything else from anybody? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, none, okay, good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you in another seven years.
Oh, do me a favor, I'm, no, you're already done, so never mind, I can't tell you. I was gonna try to get a master plan from him.
Do we have?
It's in the set.
C, it's drawing C zero zero three in the set.
Yeah, it's there.
Okay. All right, okay, thank you. You'll send me soon.
You too.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we got, what, thirty Broadway?
Well, wait, 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 I was gonna ask, then I, then, where do they start getting into AI?
Right, other business.
They pay seven million dollars for sixty-eight.
What are you looking for us, us on that?
Well, again, it's referral from the municipality, so they, I'll make sure you hear you. Confirm that being lead agency, right?
Okay, a motion for lead agent?
If you have any comments.
Okay, anybody have any comments? I think Mike does.
Right, so this is, what was in the construct, the proposed plan. And then they gave you a smaller copy of something that is an alternate validation that shows the three-story person.
So, yeah, I have a, a comment, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, if we have a comment, then we have.
Okay.
But if we declare ourselves lead agent, we can't.
No.
Not lead agent.
No, no, we don't wanna be lead agent, I don't have nothing to do with this.
You're fine with them being lead agents, much like we, we have other, right municipalities.
So there's no objection?
No objection to them being lead agents. And then it's if you have any comments.
Okay.
On, you know, the, the project.
Andy, do you have any questions or comments on this project?
No.
Okay, Matt, anything?
Yes, but I don't even know where to begin.
Well, no, no, go ahead and start, what, what's your biggest concerns?
I think it's the same as mine.
Yeah, I, I, it seems a little heavy for that site, but I don't know where our jurisdiction begins and ends on that sort of thing.
Yeah, we basically have no jurisdiction.
Right, so, I'm just making an observation, a personal opinion. So how does.
Well, that's why I'm going to write down the board and see whatever the members have to say. Let me go see what Mike has.
Yeah, perfect, and then, and then if, yeah.
If you have anything else to say.
I'll pile on if someone.
Right.
Gets into it.
My thing is, the, the alternate proposal of a three-story building. No, my thing is the, uh, the alternate proposal of a three-story building fits, uh, it's a better fit in that area. Most of the buildings in that area are three stories maximum or two stories. Uh, the three-story proposal would not require any special permits or zoning variances and would comply fully with the existing zoning requirements. I think this adds too much congestion to that, that street, South Broadway. And, uh, if you look at the other buildings along there, they're all three-story at the maximum. So my thing is that, uh, the alternate proposal of three stories would be more in fitting with the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Any, Matt, any addition?
Yes, 'cause this is, maybe this is, in terms of parking, I mean, if they have all these commercial, uh, units, and then I guess the parking garage is for residential, I mean, is. How are they gonna fit the number of cars that would be required for both the people who live in the building and people that go to the commercial spaces? It, it. Seems under parking spot, Ted.
Any questions, comments?
No, I'm just trying to figure out where exactly it is. Where is it? Is it like the gas station?
Yeah.
Yes, the gas station.
Across from the Fontana. Right behind, uh, the funeral home.
Okay, Marius Deli, it's gonna be replaced with this.
Okay, Mike? I'm catching up on, I agree with, with your prior comments, but it looks like there's underground parking, right?
Yes.
Is that what I'm seeing?
On option, the alternate option, um, the one section in construction plans.
In the basement?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Mike's statement about three-story buildings as an alternative to that area. Rook.
Put in the parking garage in NIAF. I mean, that's really what you'd be.
Has something to do with this.
Like they, like they put in that, uh, NIAF hospital. I mean, that would solve a multiple problems. But this is how it was, but this is no, this is no bigger or smaller than anything else they've built.
It's bigger.
Well, the third story is both three stories. Three, that, that's bigger, but. They're the same.
There's no bigger than anything they've built with NIAF.
It's bigger than the buildings in that area. On South Broadway, it's bigger.
And, and, and.
Yeah, see that?
As you had.
Okay, so then the question becomes. Do we want?
You'll permit it.
And propose.
And they're proposing.
And there's the alternate?
That is your turn, three-story one as opposed to that one.
Actually, it'll fit right in.
At, at three-story.
Three stories.
At three-story, yeah. Good, three, yeah, the four stories.
Yeah, this is a large drawing, they, like. So I just.
Yeah, this is all.
Elevation, so you can see.
This is the alternative one.
So it, it must be that they need some feedback to came out with this alternative.
Are there, are there parking minimums for multifamily?
I'm not a master of NIAF's code, but.
Yeah.
Municipalities do have parking requirements, but much like, um, any of the villages and even downtown Fall River, there's many projects built that require municipal parking as.
Yeah.
Or, or parking agreements with another property in order to make them work, or, you know, major variances.
Looks like, looks like they're providing twenty-three parking spots.
But you know, it says twenty-three, it looks like there's eighteen in their garage and they have eighteen apartments, so one per apartment. And then the.
That'd be a four-story.
Well, and then the twenty-three, I think, are the five in the front. Just seems like not. But, I mean, I.
All right, is anything else?
Yeah, three stories, I think, is more appropriate.
Other than Mike's comments.
Three stories looks best.
Okay, so what I, what I have is, uh, the alternate proposal is a better fit in that area. And Mike, you know what doesn't require variances, did you look at that?
This comes right from there, um, from, uh, the consulting engineers at the, they have the alternative proposal. And the second sentence there said, "This three-story proposal would not require any special permits or zoning variances and would comply fully with the existing zoning requirements." That was the letter dated January eighth, twenty twenty by DiPillia, consulting engineers.
D R, yeah, D R Pillia.
Oh, D R Pillia.
Maybe worded that, um, alternate proposal is a better fit in that area and it appears that it will not require variances, right?
Right. Or special permits.
Does. Does the first one, the, the original.
Yeah.
Have the same sort of parking below the covered?
Yeah.
What is that to the right of your pointer?
So, 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 so.
No, that's the four-story one, the three-story one.
So the, 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 the three-story one introduces the feature of having a covered parking within the footprint of the.
No, that's, that's stores.
No, look.
That's gotta be the rear.
Like parking within.
It's gotta be the rear, let me go back to the front.
The front elevation.
I think they.
Look.
They're confused.
They're gonna have parking underneath, how are they gonna have commercial?
Is this?
And if they're gonna have parking through this garage, how do they have a commercial?
Look, I mean, if he's looking west.
I can't understand where the commercial is gonna be, if they're gonna have parking underneath the building.
Appears that it's under, it's coming underground.
Well, it's, it's gonna be at the.
It's, it's, it's this, look, so, so.
Yeah, the street level.
But if, if you look at the rendering, the, it looked, so you have the garage entrance here and then you would sort of pull into this for parking underneath the apartments.
I don't think parking there just drop off.
I don't want it to show stores in the front.
And then commercial piece, even much of the stores, so it'll talk on this.
Well, so you have, you have to go up.
Any parking. And any parking in front would be a dangerous condition because they would have to back out into the street.
Yeah, parking is on the ground, but.
I don't see how you get out from underground.
Yeah, it's here.
Their, their drawings are confusing. Either there's parking in the front or there's not parking in the front. Both show stores, but it's, the one is, uh.
Unless you want me to start pulling these construction plans apart for you, I don't know.
I would advise against spending so much time on that. It's gonna be like one of our projects, it's gonna go on for half a year, it's gonna change. We don't know their code, I wouldn't spend so much time on this.
Right, so I, if we go back to, um, Mike's original thought, alternate proposals, a better fit in that area and it appears it will not require variances or special permits. All other buildings in the area are a maximum of three stories.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Motion to use that authority?
Second? All favor, aye, okay.
You don't wanna.
Might be a motion?
No, we're not gonna go into it.
Mike made the proposal. Okay, what about, are we doing the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, so I sent out revised minutes.
Yep.
With, uh, incorporate everybody's comments.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as corrected?
Motion to accept the minutes as corrected for the.
January eighth?
January eighth, planning board meeting.
Second? All favor? Aye, any opposed, done?
I wasn't here, so I'll.
Okay.
Stay out of it.
One, two, three, four, five.
Five, we have enough.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All favor? Aye, opposed, done, good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, by the way. Mr. Gerard is leaving us. So this is his last meeting, I don't know when your last meeting will be.
It'll be in two weeks from Monday.
Okay.
No.
We wish you well, where are you going?
Yep, I'm sure.
All right. Well, good luck.
Thank you. Been a pleasure.
Good job, man, good job. We have replacements?